The other.
Okay, just wait for Mr. Watson. Oh, it was locked, the door is locked. Hello. Uh, Tim, when Tim's ready, we're gonna go live. Uh, good evening. My name is Mary Skryer, I'm deputy mayor for the town of Quispamcis, and I will be presiding over this evening's meeting. So first of all, I'd like to have an approval of the agenda, please. Counselor Miller, seconded by Counselor Bigger on the question. What's to come up? Okay, motion carried. So, um, opening remarks. So as I mentioned, I'm Mary Skryer, deputy mayor for Quispamcis, and it's my pleasure to welcome you to our council meeting. I want to first of all, thank everyone for helping us keep safe during the wildfires. We continue to deal with them every day with the dry conditions. The wildfire risk has decreased significantly, but the risk is still there. Just a reminder that all parks and trails in Quispamcis are open. But please, visit the government of New Brunswick Fire Watch webpage for the utmost to date information, and when in doubt, you can always call our local fire department. Quispamcis is exploring how we can enhance the Gondola Point Road to be a scenic and multi-model transportation corridor for homeowners, residents, visitors, and commuters. This means making it comfortable for people who live there, who drive there, our pedestrians, and our cyclists. Before considering any designation options, the town wants to hear from Gondola Point Road residents and all the community members about the state of the road and what improvements you would like to see. You can find a link to the project website and survey through the news and notice section of our website at quispamcis.ca. Speaking of Gondola Point Road, we have some very important construction happening right there now as we work on the lift station number four and the installation of a forest main nearby. Other improvements in our town are underway on Millennium, near the intersection of Route 119 and the Gondola Point arterial. We also have major infrastructure projects beginning next week with the installation of the water main on Cedar Ridge Boulevard. This water main will bring the opportunity for more residents to connect to the municipal water system. Future phases will connect to the water main on the Hampton Road to provide a system and promote future development. I'd like to thank our staff and contractors for completing this important work and helping our community move forward. Have you tried KV Go? It's a public partner transit project in partnership with Rosé. We have buses on the road every day starting at eight thirty a.m. to help provide you to get from your favorite destinations in the KV, like parks, playgrounds, grocery stores, and much more. Find the routes and schedule on kvgo.org. This weekend, we will be having the cultural fest in the valley at the Arts and Cultural Park this weekend. And with the weather that we've been having, I hope it holds up for us. It's a chance for everyone to explore many cultures and to make community connections. There will be performances on stage, plus you can taste different foods, participate in crafts and clothing, and so much more. International Cultural Fest in the Valley, as I said, starts on Saturday from twelve to four. For more information through the events calendar on our website again, quispamcis.ca. Welcoming Week is this week, is beginning to recognize, is beginning, is being recognized across Canada from September twelfth to the twenty-first. It's a time for neighbors of all backgrounds to come together, celebrate our shared values, and build stronger, more connected communities. It highlights how embracing both our similarities and differences make us more resilient, united, and prepared for the future. It's also Rail Safety Week, September fifteenth to the twenty-first across Canada. In the first six months of two thousand and twenty-five in Canada, there were more than a hundred and thirty incidents involving serious injury or death at railroad crossings or related trespassing. Please be careful and stop when you hear those horns. Visit operationlifesaver.ca for more information about rail and safety, and please stay safe. So that concludes the remarks for this evening, and we're going to move on to our agenda. And we're going to start with a land acknowledgement from Counselor Donovan, please.
We would like to respectfully acknowledge that Quispamcis exists on the traditional territory of the Wolusstuwig, Malacite, and Micmac people whose ancestors, along with Pasamaquoddy tribes, signed peace and friendship treaties with the British Crown in the seventeen hundreds. We would like to take this moment to pay respect to the elders, past and present, and the descendants of this traditional territory. And may we remind ourselves of the important work we have before us tonight. May we make good decisions without prejudice or bias and always in the best interests of our community, which we are here to serve.
Thank you, Counselor Donovan. Do we have any disclosure of interests? Seeing there is none, we'll move on to presentations. And tonight, we have Mr. Olet here with the Funded Regional Service Commission bringing forth the proposed two thousand and twenty-six budget presentation. Welcome, Mr. Olet, always nice to see you. And I'm gonna let the podium be yours.
Yes, okay, great. Thank you for having me. I understand there's a big package that was submitted as part of this, so you've got a lot of information. I'll try to go through this quickly. There is a presentation up. Maybe while it's getting set up, the presentation really goes through an opportunity for this group to have a review of the budget, provide feedback, and ask questions. It is part of our legislative requirement to have a forty-five day review, so we end up going to different member councils to review it. This year's budget is a little unique because of two important things. One is, we tasked ourselves to do something quite ambitious, which was to establish a work plan before we developed the budget. This was not done in the past. I'm not sure if that's your own practice here, but it really helps inform the budget. If you can do it, it's tough to do, six months in advance of the actual year that you're projecting to do the work. But we were able to do that. In addition, we were able to update our regional strategy. So it's relevant. And what that means for us is that this budget should be very kind of freshly related to the needs that are being found in our region, and also real focus on that tangibility towards those needs of members. We have the slide deck, or no? Not sure. It's not. I could put it on my computer if that's easier. Yep. How much battery power I have is a separate question.
Would just be a moment while we get the technology up and running.
You're faster than me.
Is that the one you're looking for, Mr. Olet? Okay.
Okay, okay, thank you. I'm gonna go through these next slides quite quickly. They are just summary-based slides, so if you could change the slide. We do have eight mandates. Again, I'm not gonna go through this too heavily, but it is part of your package, happy to answer any questions. We have a QR code for our annual report from two thousand and twenty-four as well as our audited financial statements, and they are available to you. For those of you who haven't signed up, we do have a newsletter that we ask our members to sign up for. It's a great opportunity to develop that relationship to make sure that we're aware of what's happening at the local level, but also at the regional level. So if you haven't already, there's a QR code to sign up for that. There is a little section here about celebrating two thousand and twenty-five so far and what we've been able to accomplish in two thousand and twenty-five. Again, happy to respond to these. I want to be brief with the council on this beautiful evening to make sure you have time for yourselves. But I will discuss this at length if there's questions for it. If we keep going, we're gonna get into budget here for two thousand and twenty-six. We are guided by our work plan, by our regional strategy, as well as a vision that's been established by the board. And if I kind of go back to the basics here, we received this mandate from the province, and we established committees and a board. And the vision was, let's make the best of this. Let's see what we can do with this. And for us as an organization, we said, the best thing that we can do is collect that feedback from these different committees and from our members. And to be really ultimately a member-driven organization. And that's thematic across our guiding principles and vision. We go to the next. Before I get into the membership fees for two thousand and twenty-six that are projected, I did, I do think this is an important slide. We did, we do have eight mandates, but we've been around in one way or another since the late nineties as a solid waste commission. And with that, some of our mandates are matured. They've, we know how to deliver them, we know how to be efficient. Some are brand new, and we're still at that initial phase of saying, what is traction in this mandate? We understand what it is, but what does it look like in its actuality? And that really is the challenge of some of these new committees. But with that said, ninety-one percent of our budget is comprised of three primary services. Solid waste services, regional facilities, and then regional economic development and tourism. So we do receive a lot of questions around these newer mandates that are maybe a little bit less defined. But as a reminder, that they still remain a very small portion of our overall budget. If we go to the next slide, this slide is the one that I enjoy the most because it's the clearest. It's what we've, what we've had as membership fees for each member from two thousand and twenty-three onto the projected two thousand and twenty-six. Two thousand and twenty-six, we're calling for a decrease in membership fees. And this was really informed from our conversations with the group of regional CAOs that we get in touch with regularly, and really just making sure that we're in line with the expectations that are happening at the local level. And next year, loud and clear, your budgets are challenged because of the property tax freeze, among other challenges. So that was intentional to keep that at least neutral, if not less. The, another big part of our two thousand and twenty-six budget is our ability to leverage funding. Next year, we will, we will reach a new milestone of how much money we will be able to leverage to deliver our services. And part of this is explained primarily because we're accessing a million dollars that was previously given to Envision. Now it's being fed through us. So that's one reason that this big bump has happened. But it continues to tell our story about accessing those funds. I did want to cover solid waste. It is a cost center for you as well because you have your tonnage, your local tonnage that goes there, and there's a charge tied to it. Last year, we made the decision to increase our tipping fee by the cost or around the cost of inflation to make sure that we're not cutting services due to the cost of doing business. So you'll see a small increase from one thirty-nine a ton to one forty-three. What's important to note for the region is that our tipping fee for organics will always be lower because we want to subsidize and incentivize that type of diversion. That will always be lower, so you'll see that that remains at the fifty-two dollar amount. Very quick, this is our capital budget for our landfill operations. It is decreasing by over five hundred thousand dollars. And you'll see kind of our practice, which is a good one, that there's that maintenance-based stuff that we have expenditures on a regular basis, our capital and operating. So it's, it is reducing our need to borrow on a long term and to increase our diventures. We go to regional facilities. This remains hands down the biggest discussion point that the FRC board, our partners, discuss at length. This was a mandate that was given to the FRC from the province. We are the only region in New Brunswick that has five facilities mandated, and then in addition, that were responsible for the capital. This particular year, this is a very big challenge to the board. You're reviewing this with the group of regional CAOs. And last week, we, the Chair, Chair Drew Seton and I did meet with Minister Kennedy, seeking more guidance on how we're gonna solve this challenge. Ultimately, we are in a difficult space because the communities that have to finance this cannot borrow for it. So it's ultimately a fluctuating expenditure that you cannot seek long-term financing for. Only the owner can. So we've got many challenges related to this. What I would say is that this is something that remains top of mind. I think the message has been received loud and clear, not just from the FRC, but individual members, including the town of Quispamcis, has approached the minister on this and indicated that there needs to be some resolution. And that has been brought forward as well. This year, while it's not an elimination or a big change, this budget is lower than it was last year, both on the operating and the capital, not by a significant amount by any means. And this does also acknowledge the starting phases of the construction for the Aquatic Center Enhancement Project, which is the project that would support the Canada Games in two thousand and twenty-nine. If we go to economic development and tourism promotion, the only thing I wanted to acknowledge with this is that the costs have increased. There's about a three percent increase to the overall budget to those two services, tourism and economic development. But this year, what's changed, and while you'll see fluctuations here, is that we're no longer a fixed cost related to this, which was defined by a contract that was previously inherited by the FRC. It is now, the proportional share of it is defined by your share of tax base. So what that means is some of the communities are gonna pay a little bit more. So when you saw that initial breakdown of membership fees, you'll see some members paying a little bit more and some a little bit less. It's primarily due to this particular division. Some members were paying their proportional share more accurately in the past formula, and some were paying less accurate according to tax base. So those fluctuations are then coming into play for the two thousand and twenty-six budget. Okay, if we go to the next, this is kind of priorities and outcomes. I've covered a lot of this. We are in a good financial position. There's another four hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars of what the province gives us as funding that we have not tapped into yet. This is good news because it's only used one time. This is the amounts of money that we have not used in the past. And now we can save those funds for when these fluctuations in capital or operating for regional facilities come in. Now that regional facility is an eligible expense. So since we do have projections of those occurring in the future, it's wise for us to hold those funds so that they're not impactful for us in future years. So that's a good financial position for us to be in. The other thing that I did want to acknowledge is we are introducing a new, not significant, but some additional funds for implementation of our work plan. And one of the things we heard loud and clear through the work planning development is, show us some of the tangibility, especially of these new mandates, on how they're occurring in our region. And they might be more kind of quote-unquote demonstration projects. Show that there are links to each community. It's challenging to do to each mandate, but we're gonna have a more deliberate effort to try to make those tangible outcomes, which will make it easier for councils from across the region to say, you see, this is the type of work that we're talking about versus just strategies, needs assessments, reviews, and surveys. If we go to the next slide, this is something that is creative that we've done this year. It's new, it's something that we're trying to maintain. When you look at all our different mandates, I could share a budget and you'll just see the cost. But you don't have the story. You don't have the mandate, you don't have the vision behind it. So what we've developed is called the service-based budget. And it establishes the vision for each one of the mandates that's been established by the FRC board in our region. It identifies the work plan items that are projected for the coming year, and then it identifies the service that is being provided. And then it provides all the financials that we think are relevant to each member, a few, that can help tell the story of the significance of the investment and the impact of the investment. And now what we're doing is developing on the other side of the document, the history of that particular mandate. Where have we started? Where has this evolved from? How long has this been in place? Some might seem like new mandates, but they've been around for a long time. Regional economic development, it hasn't just started. We've been doing this for a while. Landfill operations has been happening for a while. On the operating side of regional facilities, it's been happening for a while. It's been changed for different members. New members have come in and mandates have expanded. But hearing that story and seeing that story and how we've evolved to it does tell a story about where we're heading and what's been done related to it. So it's a kind of a one-stop shop for budget, if you may. We go to the next slide. As I mentioned, we have a forty-five day review period. We're in the midst of that right now. The intention would be on October twenty-third to come back. We'd be scheduled to have a vote on the budget. Budgets are usually due by November, usually before local governments' budgets are due because you'd have to make the assumptions that are embedded in each regional service commission. Here today, again, to hear your feedback or any questions that you might have on our budget. Thank you for having me.
Well, thank you very much, Mr. Olet. It's, I know it's not easy putting a budget of that size together. So thank you to you and the staff and the board. And council here does recognize that it is mandated and that we understand that the legislation on a lot of these items, that we have no choice, but we're legislated to comply. But with that, council has some great questions, I know, for you regarding the budget, and we value their input, that you can carry that back to board members. So with that, I'm going to start with Counselor Luck, please.
Thank you, deputy mayor. Thank you very much, Mr. Litt, for coming. It's nice to see you. I just have, I guess, one comment and a question. Number one, service-based budget profiles, I love them. Very informative, very helpful, so thank you. I think that's a definite best practice. And then I noticed that our tipping fees have gone up ten dollars per ton. And I was just hoping you could put that in context for me in terms of, I don't know how much tonnage of waste we would generate as a community, and I'm just looking for a bit of insight, thanks.
Great question. The overtime is an important point. So this would have been before my involvement with the commission, but there was a belief of just holding tipping fee for a while. And what happens when you hold tipping fee, but all other costs increase, is your service starts to diminish, your ability to maintain, you know, equipment and products. And that's what was happening about four or five years ago. So the decision was made, it's time to increase, and we did it one time. But ultimately, the vision should be that we increase with the cost of doing business. And if it's less one year, well, let's keep it less. In creating that culture of saying, you know, we shouldn't increase it dramatically. We're not trying to do anything differently, but we should at least maintain the service that we're trying to provide. Each member is provided a projected tonnage to provide an idea of what our budget would be for each service. So for landfill operations, we provide a projection due to past efforts. And we divide that up between what diversion levels you have as well. And then you could calculate what it would be. So I suspect Ian and his team would take that one forty-three and say, what's that impact on our tonnage for next year? And then make assumptions on what that would mean for your own budget. I don't know if you'd add anything else to that?
Thank you very much. I'm going to go to Counselor Miller, please.
Thank you, worship. Thank you, Mr. Litt, for being here. I do have a bunch of questions. You already know my favoritism to the regional facilities. A couple of comments or two. With these changes in capital coming up, just the harbor station alone in the next five years is gonna cost the Quispamcis taxpayer, not everybody else, Quispamcis taxpayer, one point four million. The aquatic center is gonna be nine hundred thirty-nine, but I've got more questions on that because I think that's gonna be even higher. So in context with the increases that we're seeing in Envision, and for, when we started with Envision, we paid about a hundred and fourteen thousand dollars a year, and we used to get about eight hundred thousand dollars in grants. Now we get, we're gonna be down to zero by two thousand and twenty-seven. And Envision is now five hundred and seventeen thousand. And our eight hundred thousand dollars with the grants, if I read the legislation here, the legislation says, "With the reduction of core grant and reduction in the equalization, this will be paid to the Regional Services Support Fund", which you guys own, "that will be then used to finance RSC's initiative proposed through their strategic plans and approved by the minister. The provincial grant to the finance RSC initiatives will be equal to fifty percent the cost to approve that." So we're paying four hundred thousand dollars more, and we're getting eight hundred thousand dollars less. So my question for these funds, what has been given back to Quispamcis? I know we got twenty-five K for KV Go, but that was shared with Rosé. So can you point out anything that we've gotten back for these, as they call them, Regional Services Support Fund, specifically for Quispamcis?
Yeah, maybe a couple, a couple points. So first, I would, I'm a hundred percent aligned with you that the policy framework for the initial Regional Services Support Fund is a little bit backwards, right? They were essentially reducing the local government contributions through equalization and then saying, you can access it now through this fund. So you're kind of missing twice because you have to pay fifty percent, at least of the fees, in order to access the fund. But it was coming out of monies that you were receiving independently before. So, you know, from our standpoint, we've advocated this from the start. It was a flawed starting point. It is my understanding through the fiscal reform that they've basically said they're separated now, that that fund is being completely entirely funded by a source outside of, by eliminating costs from local government. So that's good news. We have not yet heard how much each local government's getting through local, through the fiscal reform agenda from the province. But, you know, that is the province's opportunity to make this right for local government. So we've been actively involved in that conversation. In terms of what you've received, and I'm suspecting you're referring this to all mandates or just the regional facilities and economic development? Is it, is it open-ended or is it related specifically?
You can answer it however you wish, but it's more or less, we've cut back. We're spending a lot more. A lot of it's going, even if I look at Envision here as an example. Envision, part of their mandate or part of what they have in here is that in two thousand and twenty-nine, they're gonna put three hundred seventy-five thousand dollars into operating for the Canada Games operating. So it's just taking from one bucket, moving to another, that's still our money. And, and so, yeah, so it's like, I'm just wondering, you know, it's basically a change of one point two million versus we used to get X. We, we're getting zero, and we used to pay Y, now we're paying Y plus. And I'm not even talking about the operating stuff right now. I'm talking just this. So what are we, what are we getting as a Quispamcis taxpayer?
I think the, the way I would answer the question is through the service-based budgets. That's what we're trying to explain through those service-based budgets. We're trying to explain the trajectory of each mandate, what's happened in the past, what's projected. Each mandate should be guided by, you know, a vision that's established by the region. I know that the FRC board has adopted a strategy for economic development and tourism. We've adopted a regional strategy, and we're guided by that. And ultimately, you know, the vision is, let's, let's work together as a region. Let's bring our resources together. I would, I was here early, and I remember questions from you early in the mandate. And one thing that we haven't got to yet, to the extent that I would, I would like to, is around efficiency between governments. So how can we deliver a service more efficiently between governments? We haven't, we haven't leaned into that as significantly as we could. I think there are cost savings when you think about it. But that requires a new set of values, a new set of approaches, which I think are, are being seen for the future. But these particular mandates, like for regional facilities, they were mandated to us, not asked. There was never a referendum or discussion or a vote-in, vote-out. And now that's, that's the reality. We are doing that. If, if I was in your shoes, I would be. If, if I was in your shoes, I would be asking the exact same questions. And if you were in my shoes, you'd probably do what we've tried to do, which is push those facilities to have a more regional lens. If we're paying for them anyway, how can you in- incentivize, improve your service delivery? Even though they're geographically located in the uptown of St. John, how can you do that? And, and I have seen some improvements in that, some are providing local-based services, they're reaching out, they're doing more marketing, they're trying to bring in different, um, um, members of the community from across the region. We've recently got our hands on, um, regional usage, um, which is also very interesting. It wasn't complete, it's not a perfect side. But what we're noticing is that there is a level of proportionality that we're seeing that, you know, if, if Quispam SIS is fifteen percent of the total population, some of them, about fifteen percent of the popul- of their users are from Quispam SIS. So, you know, that doesn't signify that you should therefore be paying capital in operating. And I think that's the argument of the board, is that there's some more work to say, what does that equate to? But with the power that we do have is let's push, push these commu- these regional facilities to have more of a regional-based lens and provide that service. They can't pick themselves up and say, I'm TD Station and now I'm going to be located in Rossay today, or I'm going to be Rossay, uh, I'm going to be located in Hampton. They, they can't do that, so they're physically located. But we can work with them to try to develop these, these new service offerings regionally. Um, uh, I, I have struggled too with, with, with this discussion about local benefit for regional needs. And I think if Andrew Beckett was here, he'd have the same challenge. The mandate for economic development was not to provide local economic development for each community regionally. It was to provide regional economic development. So you hear that in some of the mandates is, you know, what has me individually received? So if we have eight services, um, um, that's, you know, seven times thirty-eight. What is the, what is my tangible benefit for each? Where some of it is more broad-based, regional-based work. Um, in economic development, they would argue that as well. How much of that do you benefit from? That's like a whole economic analysis that would have to be done. So, um, I think the strategies and the work are intentional that we've done. Um, by no means is anybody trying to say, let's, let's, let's waste this money. It's not being well, uh, uh, used for what's the purpose and for the mandates. I think the trajectory of what we've done for all the mandates makes good sense, a reasonable person would take the same approach. And what we've done is made sure that the committees that are overseeing this are comprised of regional members so that we maintain our relationship to the biggest important thing here is that we're not doing this centrally, we're not doing this for, for the government in Brunswick. We're doing as best as we can align with the needs of local governments.
Thank you, um, yeah, I, I don't think some of the regional facilities are regional, but that's okay. Um, that's, again, you can't change that, so that's not, but I do have two specific questions now. Uh, one is about staffing levels and one is about the Aquatic Center and what's going on there. So, um, I did go through the newsletter, I did go through, I printed off your, your budget. I went through all of the budget, uh, as close as I could, I read all the articles and everything that I've got here. So that's why I know exactly what we're paying in the next five years, et cetera. But what I couldn't find in there, and when I tried to do some addition, because it has administration and people, is, and I tried to also go online, because every municipality and every provincial government, you can go on and find the pay scale for everybody. I could not find how many employees are, are, um, currently working for the regional facilities, and I could not find a pay scale. So, and how many was there, how many people is there and has there been any added to twenty-twenty-six? And where do we find to see the pay scales? Because I think it's a legislated, uh, requirement that anybody in public service has to be, uh, on a website. Because our town can go in, you can see all the, the job levels, Rossay's got the same job levels. I can go in and click on anybody that works for Department of Health or Education and find it. So I guess my question is, we've created another level of government, again, not your fault. But now we, we're overseeing groups, and especially in our region, we're mandated, as you stated, we've also got a robust team ourselves. So my question is, how many full-time employees do we have? And what is the total cost of our, uh, of, of the regional service commission? Um, and it, I mean, if you don't have that number now, but I mean, you can take out, uh, the, um, uh, the landfill, because that's been around for a long time, but, uh, it is, I'm just trying to see, because somebody's paying for them. So if our eight hundred thousand dollars or one point two million, it has, somebody has to pay these because we've created, the government's created another level. So can you answer that, how many full-time employees do we have?
I can give you, I can give you the information. We've, we've, we've submitted a little differently, but I'm, I'm fine with sharing that we have pay scales for employees. Uh, it's public knowledge, so we can, we can share that information, there's nothing there. Um, we do have a unionized workforce and a non-unionized workforce. We are around with, um, part-time employees and seasonal employees, about sixty employees, primarily based out of the landfill. Um, there has been some growth since twenty-twenty-three to, to support these new mandates. If you go to the service-based budget, it tells you the percentage of FTE per service. So you'll have like an example, like in, uh, public safety, I think it's like point eight-six. It's not even one person. And the reason for that is it's a bunch of people's job together and it creates this imaginary point eight-six.
Yeah.
Um, and, uh, our, our pay scales are, 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 are based, we publicize what they are, um, uh, in our, in our job postings. Um, and the other thing that I would share is, you know, I, I sense that the question's coming from, oh, the, the FRSC has grown a lot since, uh, these new mandates have come in, which is not an uncommon, um, comment that has been provided through RSCs. Um, what I would share is that the FRSC has historically not grown over the years, since twenty-twelve, since these new mandates. Others have grown incrementally. Uh, provincial government study was done two years ago to identify the per-resident cost for each regional service commission. And there's an average in, in, in the province, which I think is forty-six dollars per resident it costs them for regional service commissions. Uh, highest being one oh-nine per, per resident, and that's in the, the Acadian Peninsula. We're the lowest, uh, when the study was done at twenty-three dollars. And what that is demonstrating is that we didn't have the governance infrastructure at the start. So we have a little bit more, more room to go to get ourselves staffed up to provide services where others have grown incrementally since that twenty-twelve mandate of action, do a little bit more. So I'm proud of that, we've kept that down, we have not grown exponentially. Uh, there's never been, uh, massive growth of employees, there's been two or three per year since the new mandates have come in strategically, tactically, related to the needs that we have and to deliver the work plans that the committees are identifying. Next year, there's no new permanent employees being projected to start, uh, with the commission. Uh, we will only be doing contrast, contract-based work. So, um, I'm with you, there's, there's no need to grow if we don't need to grow. And right now, we believe we have enough resources to support the mandates that we have.
Yeah, okay, um, I guess I'm just asking, you can send it to us later, I'd just like to know how many employees, what, what do they represent of our total budget? That, that's all I'm looking at, and that includes the benefits and stuff. Because, uh, you know, that's fine, I know you're growing because you say you have to grow, but I also, when I talk, think about regional collaboration, it's like, you know what, maybe we have four other directors of finance within our, our major, maybe we could be helping out with that. Versus, I know you hired somebody and I saw between ninety-two and a hundred and thirty-two thousand, it was posted on your website, right? Um, so it's just trying to get to that and, and I'll, I'll send a, a note later, but I just want to see what it is. Because when I was going through this, like, some people will say, we have thirty full-time employees, we got this, we've got that. I, I don't see that, and...
It's placed in our service-based budget, so that's, that's where the location is in, in this budget document. Um, and happy to share more information on this, not a problem at all. Um, and no, no additional staff.
No, well, and that, to me, it's about transparency, like, you can look at every other employee. So my last question, and it gets into a little bit of concern, and, and you and I have already spoke about the Aquatic Center a few times. I, I, I wasn't happy that the study was not to s- to find out where it could be, it's where it's going to be. So we didn't even do that, right? So I was watching a newscast last week. Um, it was quite eye-opening for me, maybe it wasn't for, for, um, for yourself and the Aquatic Center. But to do the, do the Summer Games, you now have to have a warm-up pool. I don't know if that was talked about when we got our first quote. Uh, I do know, listening to the gentleman, I could find the newscast, the Global News or whatever, is that, uh, they said that's creating an issue, so they're going back to consultants to see where they can put a warm-up pool in. And then the other challenge they have now is you need to have seven hundred-plus seats as viewing to do that. Well, we used to have that or close to that when we did it in nineteen eighty-three, and I've got all the flags and pins from back then, for those of us that were alive. But the padway took where those seats were. So now we've got to add three hundred more seats, we've got to add a warm-up pool on top of that, in that spot, which I think is the worst spot to have it, and when you're trying to renovate, it's different. So my question, I have three questions on this. How much is this additional study costing, is that going to be incremental? The second question are potential considerations to move the pool to a better location and to start from scratch if the costs are too high. And the third, because nowhere in there could I find the definitive answer, it was just like, we're hoping that the federal and provincial government will, will do seventy-three point three percent. If the federal and provincial government's not secured, will this cancel the project? Or will the additional funds come on to the members?
Yeah.
So three, three pro, thanks.
Sure. Um, first question is, the initial study did review, uh, doing it alone. Uh, and it was much higher of a cost, I think it was a fifty million, uh, up to fifty million, if not more, to, to basically find a, a pad and then develop a, a, the equivalent of a, of a fifty-meter pool. Uh, so it was more expensive, um, and there'd be other risks associated with that as well. So that was not the approach, uh, we wanted to take. We have a facility that can be renovated, uh, and it can be a, a generational reinvestment into it. Um, um, the new study, uh, so this would be, it's not really a study, it's more around a design and estimate development. So we're going to Class B, last, uh, uh, last expense was related to a Class D, uh, estimate. Uh, so we're in that process right now, uh, that will run until, um, uh, late this year, and then we'll get, go into construction design immediately. Uh, that contract for that scale of, of work, uh, I believe it's in the one point five million. Uh, so part of our costs, part, part of our costs are this year is to get to that Class B. And that runs right until the end, it's like the, the, the construction design, um, uh, contract for the consultant to support it. Uh, and that's without the cities, we're, we're hiring the city as well to support from the engineering oversight of that as well. Um, and, um, and then we're getting into construction. Then, uh, next year, there's a small budget amount as part of the budget for, uh, twenty-twenty-six regional facilities capital. Uh, that would show some of those expenditures start to be incurred. Which brings you to the third question, which is, if we don't achieve the seventy-three point three percent, I think you're absolutely right. There's not really much of an appetite to proceed with the project if it's not there. So it's not just if we don't get it, it's when we get that confirmation. So it's, it's essentially like a window of about six months from now until Q-two of twenty-twenty-six. If that can't be secured, the recommendation is, you know, there's no appetite to fund the federal or provincial portion of this, nor is it suitable for us to proceed. Uh, yes, it's unfortunate, we'd have to do all this studies in advance. We have protected ourselves with that because it's opt-doubtable. So what that means is we're projected to continue having this consultant. But if, at, at a milestone of a decision like going into construction, um, another scenario could be that right now we project it to be a four, a twenty-five million dollar project, which includes a forty percent contingency, which is a pretty hefty contingency in the current environment, but it's still, it's a good contingency to have. If it came back and it was a forty million dollar project, again, done, projects, project's no longer proceeding. So at this stage, we're keeping our fingers crossed that the project, you know, is not going to go over, uh, that we are going to receive the funding. I am hopeful, uh, that we will get the funding, province and federal government have indicated that they're very supportive of it. I haven't seen the, the signed contract yet, but, um, that makes that project, you know, palatable, uh, if they, if they provide it. And they've asked me that same question many times, like, what if we can't get you that money? And my answer is, probably won't proceed. Um, so, um...
Well, thank you, Mr. Olet. Um, I don't see any further questions, but I would like to thank you on behalf of Mayor and Council for attending tonight. Um, you, you've heard concerns, there's grave concerns going forward with the budget on capital and operating the regional facilities. Uh, so, um, I know that our, um, our, our mayor will, um, continue to voice our concerns with the board. And with that, if there's a motion on the table, please, Councilor Olson.
Oh, I, I had a question.
Oh, you have a question, go ahead, Councilor Olson.
Thank you, Mr. Olet, for your, uh, information. I wonder if you could explain the, uh, membership fees and the formula that's used for that and taking into account that, uh, the, uh... Let me see here now. That the Fundy St. Martins went up by two thousand, Hampton went up by ten thousand, Quispam SIS went up by sixty-three thousand, Rossay went up by eighty-nine thousand, St. John went down by sixty-six thousand, and Grand Bay Westfield went down by eight thousand, and rural, uh, rural district, Fundy Rural District went up by four thousand. I'm just wondering, what is the, uh, what's the rationale for those increases, especially the, uh, St. John one going down sixty-six thousand?
If you go back to the economic development slide there, if you recall, um, yeah, keep going, keep going. Okay, so the first column is what the division, the percentage division of the total cost of Envision St. John was in twenty-twenty-five. Uh, those were dictated by, uh, prior agreements of the development of Envision St. John, uh, which I believe was from twenty-twenty-one. And we inherited, uh, that as part of the master service agreement that we've developed with them, uh, when we inherited the responsibility, uh, uh, for regional economic development and tourism promotion. At the time that these numbers were established, it was, it was defined as such, it was, it was a, it was an agreement amongst members. During that time, the province changed the requirement of how we are to fund economic development and the formula used for it. And according to regulation, it is by tax base. So what we basically do is, we take your tax base, and what is your tax base and the percentage of the total tax base of the region? And you either pay less or more associated with that. So in this case, we've done that for the twenty-twenty-six budget with the projected costs for Envision St. John. And we've divided it according to that tax base, not a fixed amount. So what you'll see is that, um, and I know this, I've worked at the city before, um, uh, I took on this role. And one of the things that happened at the, at the time when I was with the city is, uh, the city made this calculation of how much each member of the region paid for economic development at the time, and this was like in the late twenty-eighteen. Uh, St. John was paying like seventy, seventy-five percent of the total cost. But their tax base or their population was more like fifty or fifty-five percent. So it'd always been this ongoing dialogue of, we should reach parity, we should reach proportionality related to these mandates. Um, so what we're simply doing now is instituting what the regulations indicate we're supposed to do, is to use it by tax base. You'll see that St. John obviously was paying more of their proportional share, uh, than they should have, that's why they're, they've decreased. Where others, there's going to be a bump, uh, they'd see a larger bump, um, because their proportionality was not there. So it's really a, a percentage of tax base that causes the in- the increase.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Olson, Councilor Beggar, please.
Thank you Deputy Mayor, and thank you, uh, Mr. Olet for being here, running through all this, it's certainly a comprehensive budget, lots and lots in there. Um, I just wanted to ask, um, a question about the priority focus, uh, as identified in your slide presentation, page eight, I guess it is, where there are some, um, I guess, goals that are identified, uh, for the twenty-five, twenty-six season, uh, among the Board of Directors. And the first one is, uh, says to develop a two-way agenda between the FRSC and local communities. And, uh, as you lay out, the committees for the various mandates, of course, serve as a principal way of doing that insofar as, like you say, they include, uh, uh, regional municipality members on those committees. I sit on the transportation committee, as you know. Um, and, uh, now you mentioned the, uh, at the beginning, you mentioned, uh, as you ran through the regional facilities slide, you said this one probably generates more conversation, you know, and uncertainty than anything else. And probably not far behind that would be, uh, perhaps the economic development piece. Uh, and so, bearing in mind where we've come from and where we are now, I guess I read this goal identified by the FRSC board as, uh, to me, what that means is more is to be done. Uh, the regional committees, uh, rather, the mandate committees, uh, the subcommittees certainly have their role in terms of trying to represent the various insights and, you know, uh, needs of the regional municipalities, uh, in the context of the mandates specifically. But I just wonder if you could expand on that? But I just wonder if you could expand on that a little, maybe in terms of what more work do you imagine should be done in that regard? And so I just wanted to give you an opportunity to expand on that.
I really appreciate this question and I thank you for asking it. I'm going to answer it in maybe two ways, and one is maybe an outlet and then another way is maybe some advice. The outlet is that we've got a new government since the last time I met with you, I believe. And with that, they've come in and said, we'd like to do a review of regional service commissions. Some are working efficiently, working well, they've expanded, some are still challenged. For example, in Kings, they're, they still have a trustee. They don't have a board. The board cannot meet, they, it's decided by a trustee. And so they want to know why, why are some working? Why are some not working? And I think, you know, some might see this as intimidating, like what's, what's going to happen? Where, where, I think this is excellent. This is great news. This is a time for us to reflect on where should we collaborate? So like, I almost think of this like an opposite. The province came to us in twenty twenty-three and said, you shall. Here's your mandates and you shall. What if we, that didn't happen? What if, what if we got to decide what it is? Let's say we spent the same amount of money, but you just decided where you wanted to work on. Would we do it differently? It's a great question and I think we should answer that question. We should force ourselves to say where they are. You know, I have my own beliefs, like I think there are efficiencies between communities, but that's also challenging. If, if I'm going to say, like councillor Miller said, there's director of finance, right? What if I were to say, oh, this whole region only needs three directors of finance? Well, that's a tough thing to say to a municipality. That's autonomy and authority. Are we ready to have that conversation? And so, you know, that's maybe further down the line, maybe that's a, a future, but maybe, you know, we can provide a service that everybody can say, hey, if you provide it or if we do it together, it's twenty-five percent less, let's do it. But that requires a level of ability to say, we're okay with a different model of receiving service. That's something that I'd be very interested in pursuing because I think that's what I'm hearing from members is find us some cost savings. And that's to me where you'd find cost savings, is when you look at each local government and say, how could we deliver the service more efficiently? Like I have a, a public safety committee and we counted thirty different public safety organizations across the region for a hundred and twenty thousand people. I'm not criticizing any one of those, but is there a more efficient way of delivering that service? Maybe, perhaps. I know, how would you go in there and do that? So these are things that I, I'd be interested in advancing. Doesn't mean that the board has a full mandate in it, but I'd encourage all of you to come up with those same. So the advice that I'd give you, and I've given this to other councils is, I mentioned previously that I started in local government, so maybe my mind is local government driven. Local government should always exist and not everything a local government does should be regional. That's unfair. You have to fix potholes. Wouldn't that be crazy if you had to call the RSC every time you have to fix a pothole and say, hey, can we fix a pothole? Is there a more efficient way of doing this? That would be, that'd be bananas. But, but there are some times that it does make sense. And what I'd encourage councillors and staff is when that time comes, raise your hand and say, I think there's something here. I suspect you're all facing the same challenge. And I hear that when I meet with the CAOs, I hear that in the committee work and people self-identifying that something can be done regionally. But I also want to limit that by saying not everything local should be regional. You should have the autonomy and authority to do your own things without, you know, the need to develop regional platforms of collaboration.
Thank you very much, Mr. Olet, for your final comments and for your presentation tonight. So with that, is there a motion? Councillor Luck, please.
I'd like to move that Mr. Olet be thanked for his ever SC twenty twenty-six proposed budget presentation.
Second by councillor Beggar. On the question, please vote. Councillor Miller? Okay, we're good. Motion carried, seven zero. Thank you very much, Mr. Olet. And so now we're moving on in the agenda. Public hearings, we have no. Previous minutes of the last meeting, September second meeting. Councillor Beggar.
Yes, deputy mayor, I move the minutes of the September second, two thousand twenty-five regular meeting be approved as presented.
Thank you. Do I have a seconder, please? Second by councillor Olson on the question. Seeing there is none, please vote. Motion carried. Unfinished business, section eight, draft U M N B resolution. This is pretty straightforward. Could I have a motion? Councillor Miller, please.
Thank you. I'd move the council of Quispam sis hereby resolves that Mayor Libby O'Hara be appointed as a voting member at meetings of the Union of Municipalities in Brunswick U M N B, with Deputy Mayor Mary Schreier appointed as the alternative voting member.
A second by councillor Luck on the question. Seeing there's none, please vote. Motion carried, six zero. Next councillor, number nine, correspondents. Tonight, we have correspondents from Mr. McMillan requesting to approach council. Mr. McMillan, you're here this evening. Would you like to come to the podium? And we do state your name and your address, please.
Jerry McMillan, and I live on sixty-nine Stock Farm Road. And I, so madam deputy mayor and members of council, I certainly appreciate this opportunity to discuss the, the issue that I have with the erosion on, next to my home at, at that location. So I'll give you a little description of, I put it in the letter, maybe I should have had more slides. I know not having, maybe not being familiar where I live, it may be hard to understand exactly what, what the issue there is, but just to give you a description, I'm about a little over half a kilometer in, on Stock Farm Road. Beyond my house is a, a steep climb, a hill that takes you right to the top of Stock Farm Road. And that hill, the distance is about point seven kilometers, point eight kilometers. And what happens, I, in this gully that is beside my home, and it, it's actually beside the roadway that leads down to the back of my property and the garage that I have down there. The, so the runoff from the road, the ditches for that whole length of, of road on both sides come down and just where my house is happens to be a little flat spot in the road. So when the road apparently was constructed and they put a catch basin on one side of the road, run a pipe across to a, a manhole on my side of the road. So it, it, it catches all the water from both sides of the road. And then it's directed from that manhole across a piece of my property and into this gully. In, so over the years, I've been there twenty-four years, it's, it's been eroding the depth of this, this gully. And I, I didn't measure it when I got there, but it's now made the, the slope of the edge of my roadway extremely steep, about a one to one, which is not very stable. And I believe that in, in a short time, it could, it could undermine that side of the driveway and maybe my access down back. So I did have, I talked to the, the town's public works department and the, the engineering department. And they certainly appreciate the help they've given. They come out to see me right away and discuss the, the issue with me. They, they do, they, they do acknowledge that there is an issue there. But in, in, in their response, it wasn't quite as good as I would have liked. It was that their responsibility in terms of mitigating the situation is about fifteen feet beyond the end of the pipe. The area of concern is about seventy-five feet. So, you know, I'm just, so when Mark Morrison, he was the gentleman that was out, you know, what his intention is on this, on the town's behalf is to do up a, a, a package and get some pricing and hopefully be able to get it approved in, in next year's budget. The, beyond that, the, the, and the solution seems to, the best solution seems to be riprap, which is large angular rock to, to stop the erosion. And my, the, so I, I don't know what the, the, what the, the town's normal procedure is or responsibility is regarding drainage of the, their road infrastructure. It is the only water that's going into that gully. There is no water from my property or minimal water from my property that would be going into that gully. It's totally part of that infrastructure. Back in twenty fourteen, the, the old infrastructure, when I got there, the, this manhole I'm speaking of, and which I showed a picture of, was buried. Didn't even know it was there. And then in twenty fourteen, the pipe that goes across my property was a steel pipe, crowed it, had a hole in the driveway. And anyway, the, the town repaired it with a much, much larger manhole. I don't know if the reason was a lot more flow or why, but there's a much larger manhole there now and, and a pipe was replaced with a concrete pipe. So it is the, the infrastructure of that road that is causing the erosion. And I guess I'm just asking for all the help the town may be able to offer in, in helping me with, with the cost. And the, well, it's not just, there's, there's engineering, there's a, a construction package that's got to be put together. And then of course bids and, and a cost. So I'm asking for whatever help the town can offer in regards to covering the cost of this, this issue. So that's.
That's great. Thank you, Mr. McMillan. You, we know what you're asking for. Everybody on council has the package and your letter as to the situation. And so I'm going to put it to, is there's any questions? Councillor Luck.
Thank you, deputy mayor, and thank you, Mr. McMillan, for coming and bringing your concern to our attention. You know, I, I guess it's, it's interesting because this is not the first time we've heard about just the issues around steep slopes and the impact, especially with the different climate changes that we're, we're seeing. Could I actually direct through you to our head of engineering, Mr. Loge? I just, you know, again, I don't know the details. And hopefully we can have a motion that, you know, we'll get the department to go and explore a little bit further and come back with a report. But I'm just wondering, in light of, it sounds, because again, I don't know all the details and it sounds like we still have some investigation to do, but it's kind of our roadwork and directing the flow that's impacting someone's property. And I'm just wondering, kind of, are policies around that or kind of the viability of, I guess, next steps?
Director of engineering, Mr. Loge. Sorry, just one moment. There you go.
Thank you, through you, deputy mayor. The, the response from, from our engineering manager and our public works director, our public works superintendent is correct in that the town's basic premise is we operate and maintain the drainage systems within the municipal right of way. So from the edge of the asphalt, that ranges anywhere from ten to twenty feet from the edge of the asphalt. And the outfalls from cross culverts are managed that way. So the initial review of, of my staff, when they looked at it, is that one way that they can deal with the drainage in a particular area is to create a dissipation pond or some way to, to, to slow the, the force of the water down. So that would, the, the volume is something that, when we looked at the, the road layout and the contours, the stock farm was initially a provincial designated highway. Stock farm was a, was a DTI road. So, so the drainage systems were installed to the existing natural water courses that were there at the time. So that's why when we look at some of these cross culverts, you know, we will maintain to the edge of the property line because it is considered a natural water course or a water course that existed to the, to the, to the, at the time of construction. When we look at upgrades to the system, if there's something that the town can do, and we've done it on numerous occasions, usually it's, it's with the permission of the landowner, approval of council in advance because it will usually result in some type of a budget overrun when we're doing work in the particular area. So, and that usually will involve us not just going to the edge of the, the culvert, but if we have a piece of equipment, how far will that piece of equipment go? And what we're doing is we're not concerned about getting onto private property, damaging lawns, driveways, things like that. Because all of a sudden, instead of just dealing with the drainage situation, now you're dealing with reinstatement of property. And, and so we try to look at, at what can we do at the best situation to, to help with that? And that's where we've had the most response to similar requests, is that we may not be able to address a full seventy-five feet of work as part of the, the project that we do, but we may be able to go a little bit beyond the fifteen feet, which is the edge of the, edge of the property line with the permission of the landowner. Beyond that, then we get into, if, if there's a requirement that we go and maintain the full drainage system, then it's, it's in the acquisition of an easement. Then you require the proper survey, the legal property of the, the limits, so that you can go in there and maintain that fully. And it becomes the ability of the town to go on that and, and dig it and reinstate it. But now the municipality becomes responsible for that easement forever and a day afterwards. So it's always a, a case of trying to find that happy medium when, when you speak about liability and responsibility. So for us, the staff has, you know, have just made that initial review. If there is a desire of council, look at next year's budget and see where, where we can look at in their, in our maintenance program and say, okay, what is a reasonable next step that we can do and, and is the most effective use of the equipment, the most economical way to address some of the concerns? You know, we can, we can, you know, take that back and, and have my staff look at that. If it's a case of saying, hey, we're going to go in and, and fully riprap or storm through the seventy-five feet, you're talking a project that's, as Mr. McMillan mentions, is a significant cost. You know, just off the top, in the past, we've done, you know, a hundred feet of stone alone. You're, you're in excess of fifty thousand dollars or more. Depends on what kind of depth you are looking at, what kind of grade, what you have to do to reinstate the, the sides. If it's just a case of protecting against, you know, side slope sliding, subsidence of the, of the banks, sometimes you can achieve that with just some stone along the bottom of the ditch line. That solidifies the, the bottom, keeps the bank sides stable. The stone will, as Mr. McMillan mentioned, dissipates that energy and it sort of stabilizes that for, for, for foreseeable future. But at this stage of the game, the, the, the package that my staff has been lurking on has really been just under that normal maintenance within the property limits. But if council wishes us to look at that a little bit further, we can take it back and look at, you know, what's a reasonable amount of, of work, the level of effort that will minimize the amount of damage, get the most amount done for the, I don't want to say the least amount of effort, but the least impactful amount of effort, I guess you'd say.
Go ahead, follow-up question, and then I'll go to councillor Miller, I believe. Okay. Councillor Luck, follow-up question.
Just a follow-up. So if, as you were saying, in terms of like kind of taking care of, you know, kind of closer to the roadway and doing, how much, like what's the fees? closer to the roadway and doing, how much, like, what's the feasibility of that mitigating further erosion? Like, you know, is that feasible, that if it's kind of done, that at least where it's at now, it's not going to further erode?
The thing about water and nature, through your worship, is that you can never a hundred percent guarantee what's going to happen. What we look at is if it's a channel that has a, that has a defined base and, and the bottom of that channel can be, the flows of the water can be maintained in that and, and the force is dissipated and sort of maintain a long, then generally what we've seen in the past is the, the banks will be, stay stable. It's those, those significant storm events, as you mentioned, climate change events that may, you know, surcharge the banks, that's when you get in trouble. When you get into an area that's not protected, it's just topsoil or just sand, and then all of a sudden that collapses. So what we would be looking, at, at, just our initial look at this was create a dissipation area that could catch, contain, dissipate the energy from the flows and then just release it at a reasonable rate down the, down the defined channel. If we, if we look at going beyond that, then we will be looking at stabilizing the banks a little bit more and creating a larger area for that force to be dissipated over with. And then it's, we, we've had good luck in that, as we go further down the, the banks, it, it's, now you've got something maintained. Obviously, if something happens on the surface, an ice dam, rain, whatever, and it cuts it, and all of a sudden you've got a second factor influencing it, all bets are off. But what, what we try to do is, is, as Mark and, and Jason, our, my team has mentioned to Mr. McMillan, is we try to maintain what we can where we have, and that's our best ability to do it, that we have the ability to maintain on a regular basis. We have, you know, the road patrols that look at it, the, the neighbors will look at it and give us a call if there's an issue and it's easily maintained by the staff and the, and the equipment that we have.
Thank you. Counselor Miller, please.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor, and thank you for bringing concerns. I was just going to thank Mr. Loge for, for those comments, but I, I as one would like to see how far we could go and to make sure that it doesn't ever, I, I know as you stated, we can never stop water from continuing, but the farthest we can get would be the preferred and also if there's some way to deviate it down near the bottom. Or right now, I know we, or sorry, what I understood, we channeled, it used to go on both sides of the road, the one side of the road, is maybe we divert a little bit back over to the other side. I don't know if that creates another problem, but, but anyways, I would, yeah, the nod there, so yes. So, so I, I guess I would like to see something in, in the budget, whether it's, you know, the, the fifteen feet, if we can do that, if that's still in this year's budget, it wouldn't change anything else and perfect, do it then. And for the rest, yeah, throw, throw it in the budget just to see, so we can see the number. So I appreciate that and I understand it's not a, it's not a simple fix, right? Or, or else we would have it done. Thanks.
Yeah, on that, I concur with Counselor Miller. I think that we should try to go as far as we can to help mitigate this issue. I know that we've had, we had quite an issue on the Stock Farm Road this year, the way we had to bring in a lot of ro, ro, rock further down where the bank gave out on us. So I'll go back to Director of Engineering and Work. Thank you.
Thank you, worship. And, and again, the, the project was, we were looking at to include it in the twenty-six program. Our, our budgets this year are expanded from the drainage perspective. You will see in our next submission to council that we'll be doubling our request for local drainage budget. And so that's going to be a significant ask from that perspective, so we can address things like this. We're seeing more and more of this as we move along. The, 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 the cross culverts were installed by DTI back in the day at those points where, you know, there's bellies in the stock farm, it's not all, it's up and down, and so sometimes you, you're going to create more of an effort to try to move it along. So we're at a stage here in this particular location where we're sort of restricted where we can take it just by grades. And it would be substantially more expensive to, to try to bypass a particular area. And, and now you're into the same thing, you're just pushing it down the road, literally and figuratively. So I think we're at the best location to do this, but I think the staff have an understanding of Mr. McMillan's concern. I've got an understanding of what council wants to see from a, from a reasonable approach. We're, if we're anything, we're, we are reasonable when we look at these things, understanding that some of these impacts are beyond the capacity of our residents and council's willingness in the past to help address them. And so my staff is already aware that we may be exploring this as an option. So it's, it's within, within the expectations that we've, you know, as we prepare our budgets for twenty twenty-six.
Thank you very much, Mr. Loge. Counselor Bigger, please.
Thank you very much, Deputy Mayor. Certainly sounds like the Engineering and Works Department has it well in hand there, but just want to say thanks for taking the time to come in and speak with us about this. And because it's here in the package, I'll make a motion that correspondence from the McMillans be referred to the engineering staff for examination and subsequent follow-up.
Okay. Can I?
Could I, just a moment, please? What, could I have a second? Mr. Olson? Can I take his question before the question? On the question first? On the question? Mr. McMillan, you wanted to make some closing?
Worship, just a, just a comment to Mr. Loge's discussion about the property line. This, the, the manhole is within the right of way of the highway, but the pipe goes across my property, past the property, past that property line over to the gully. And, yeah, so, and as, as we all know, climate warming is changing, the, the rain, we haven't had much in the last three months or so, but if it stayed like that, I'd have no worries. But I'm sure that's not going to happen. So anyway, I certainly appreciate all your comments and your willingness to have a look at this for me. And so, thank you very much.
Could I please have a vote? So the motion's carried, Mr. McMillan, the motion's carried. Staff is going to look more into this and they will get back to the council and to yourself. So thank you very much for waiting tonight. I know it was a bit of a wait. Have a good evening.
Well, it was an interesting presentation. I, I felt, and I didn't, couldn't quite meet up to, what, Mr. Roulette, was it?
Yeah, yeah.
I couldn't quite meet up to what he had for presentation. I couldn't put more, that's why I said, I should have brought some slides. Well, I should, I should have taken more pictures.
Thank you, Mr. McMillan. Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, we're going to carry on. So we're under new bylaws, there's nothing, new business, council final acceptance. This is subdivision developers agreement for phase two. No? Okay, Counselor Donovan, please.
Where is the developer satisfied the minimum requirements in accordance with subdivision bylaw zero three five? In the developers agreement, it would be appropriate for council to grant final acceptance of the MPSF Development Phase Two subdivision. In addition, we recommend the council approve release of the thirty-three thousand, one hundred and fifty dollars and seventy-five cent bonding to MPSF Developments, Inc.
Could I have a secondary, please? Counselor Luck? On the question? Any questions? No? Please vote. Motion carried, six zero. Request for waiving facility rental fees. This is standard over the years. We've waived the fees for Canadian Blood Services, the Royal Canadian Legion, and the Canapacases Crime Stoppers, Crime Stoppers and KV Quilt Guild. Is, could I have a mover on this, please? Mr. Counselor Bigger?
Yes, thank you, Deputy Mayor. I move council approve the requests to waive the twenty twenty-six facility rental fees for Canadian Blood Services, the Royal Canadian Legion, Canapacases Crime Stoppers and the KV Quilt Guild. Being a great, being a great lover of quilts myself.
Seconded by Counselor Miller. Anything on the question? All those in favor, please vote now. Motion carried, thank you very much. Section C, Foxborough Ridge subdivision. See, Mr. Dunn is in the audience. Mr. Dunn, did you want to speak tonight? Okay. So we have a package in our kit is on the question. Does it, okay, we have some questions. Counselor Donovan?
I was just going to make a motion that council grant assent to the Foxborough Ridge subdivision plan so that the plan can be certified by the clerk as to the assent of the council and the plan can be approved by the development officer for registration.
Do I have a secondary? Counselor Luck, your secondary? On the question? Counselor Miller, please.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I guess I just have one question on Wentworth Boulevard that goes down to attach. Is, is that, are you going to be able to do that at the end? It seems like a, quite a slope. I didn't, I know there were some studies going on about rock and stuff, I think, for this, the one that attaches it to Mr. McKay's, down to Heritage.
Through you to Mr. Coburn, please, development officer.
So the developer will be completing to his property line, his portion to start that process? Part of that development will look at the grade from that property down to Heritage and see where that falls in line with. So we looked at it.
So I have a couple. One is along that property line or that road. So are we hearing that that won't necessarily be a connector road? Will it connect the two subdivisions together? Or is there any possibility that that will not happen?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor, for the question. So at some point in time, there will be a connection. We have to recognize that the area between Mr. Dunn's property and Heritage Way is owned by a different developer with budding lots that are potential for development. As part of Mr. Dunn's development, in order to provide sewer service, he did undertake the installation of the sewer main through that particular area and also installed service laterals to those properties to obviously encourage development in that particular area. So at some point in time, that road will be connected. There is a future street that's vested to municipality, so the actual mechanisms are in place to ensure there is a connection, which means nobody can build a house in the middle of the, of the area that you want for the connection. So it's a matter of timing and development for that to be undertaken.
I did have one more question, then I'll go to Counselor Luck. My question was on the, the wetland. As I recall, there was, there is wetland on the property and there was a, a, a ratio of amount of dollars donated for the wetlands. Am I to understand that that's not going to happen anymore, that all the wetlands are being designated as land for public purposes and that, that will now be owned by the town?
Thank you, Deputy, for the question. So when the, when the initial development was submitted to the town, there was a requirement to identify any particular wetlands in the area. As council may recall, did go through an environmental impact assessment. So there were two areas of wetland. There's one that's currently, has shown on the subdivision plan that's presented before council. It's delineated with the intention of that being part of the land for public purposes, which will be owned by the municipality, which ensures protection of that particular area. There was also a smaller wetland that was further towards the Penningill Road, Jitney Way area. That's what the developer had to pay compensation for. So that particular area was permanently destroyed as part of the development. However, the larger wetland area shown on the plan is being vested to municipality through, for land for public purposes. That area also contains the attenuation pond, so any stormwater goes into that particular pond and then makes its way through the, the water courses into Richie Lake.
Thank you very much. And the, the developer will create the retention pond at their cost? Thank you very much. Counselor Luck, please.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I'm just going to launch off from Deputy Mayor's question in terms of the land for public purpose. Because it looks like a significant piece of that is wetland, I'm just wondering what the feasibility is with the retention pond for us to actually use it for, you know, instead of town purpose, like public purpose, where, you know, is there any feasibility of using it for trails or anything else in the future? Or will it just be undeveloped to protect the wetland and have the retention pond? Thanks.
Sorry, Mr. Coburn.
Through you to Counselor Luck. So first and foremost, it becomes important when we have these wetlands, especially if they're delineated, that we have the ability to protect them. When it comes to wetlands, if they're obviously not potentially significant, if they're regulated, when they're under private ownership, there is always that opportunity for the developer to approach the department environment, go through the, the three-step process, which part of that three-step process is if I pay you compensation, then I can destroy the wetland. Given the location of this particular wetland, that it ultimately makes its way into Richie Lake, as council is aware, we have put significant investment and resources into creating a Richie Lake management plan, striking committee to oversee that. So this is a great opportunity to grab particular areas that feed in and are sort of filters and help control the future of Richie Lake. So that's first and foremost, and that is in the subdivision bylaw, there's a criteria that's listed, and I've referenced them in my staff report. One of those is simply taking open space. So council has the right to say, this particular area, we want to capture it, we want to leave it as it is. It is used for public, so it abuts the French school, so they can enter into that particular area in terms of just being natural space and explore and, and use it that way in terms of trail development. There is always potential. We would look at what the feasibility and, and practicality is of putting a trail in there. We would obviously have to work with the department of environment to locate those trails. If it did have a direct impact on the wetland, then we would have to go through the same process as approaching and paying compensation and those types of things. But that means that you could work within the buffer, it's locating it appropriately and trying to minimize any impacts on the wetland. So there's criteria that's in the subdivision bylaw, and I've made reference to what's practical and applicable in this particular location. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We have a motion on the table, it's been seconded on the question. Please vote now. Motion carried, Mr. Dunn. Thank you very much for choosing Quispemcis, and thank you to the staff for all the hard work on the file. Thank you very much. Building inspector. The appointment of Megan, Megan Hare as the building inspector. Could I have a motion, please? Counselor Luck?
I'd like to move that council appoint Megan Hare as the building inspector for the town of Quispemcis to exercise relevant duties as provided for under the authority of the Quispemcis Building Bylaw.
Seconded by Counselor Donovan. On the question? Seeing there is none, please vote. On behalf of council, we'd like to congratulate Megan Hare as the new building inspector for the town of Quispemcis. Moving on to reports, is there any questions? Oh, Counselor Luck, please.
I just want you to give a shout-out, I know it's the second edition, but I want to give a shout-out to our staff, specifically Tim Ruzell, for the excellent employee newsletter. I thought it was very informative and I think it's a, a great addition just for staff engagement. So I just wanted to acknowledge that. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Counselor Luck, for the recognition of our staff. Is there any more questions? No? Business arising from committee of the whole feasibility study. This is to make sure, I guess, validate our motion from August nineteenth. Could I have a motion? Counselor Miller, please.
Thank you. As per the motion made on the August nineteenth, twenty twenty-five Committee of the Whole meeting, council ratified the email poll of July twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-five and approved the feasibility study for shared wastewater management at a cost not to exceed forty thousand dollars using available twenty twenty-five utility funds and/or utility capital reserve.
Thank you very much, Ms. Counselor Miller, seconded by Counselor Luck. On the question? Seeing there is none, please vote. Seeing there is none, please vote. Yep, okay, yeah. Yeah, okay. Oh, I thought you were saying no, sorry. Okay, motion carried, 6-0. So could I have a motion to adjourn?
Yes.
Counselor Olson, seconded by Counselor Donovan on the question? Please vote. Thank you very much. Motion carried. Thank you for your attention this evening to the public. I hope you have a pleasant evening. 10 minutes, 10 minutes. We're going back into, yes, 10-minute break?